Good evening, everyone. Now call to order this May 5th, 2025, meeting of committees of council. We'll begin with a roll call of members. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Madden.
Here.
Mr. Royo.
Here.
Mr. Gleese.
Here.
Ms. Gregg.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Hirsch.
Here.
President Baker.
Here. A few reminders at the top of the meeting. First, for any members of council, the public, or the administration that will be speaking this evening, please do so directly into the microphones so we can be heard on our temporary system. If you haven't already, please silence your phones and devices. This meeting and its participants are being recorded. Tonight, we have meetings of committees of council. There are no general public comment periods during these meetings. However, committee chairs will call for comments from the public on legislative items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and must begin with your name and block of residence for the meeting record. We'll now go, move to the approval of the minutes of the April 1st, 2025 committee meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilors, any comments on the meeting minutes? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Madden.
Aye.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Gleese.
Aye.
Ms. Gregg.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz. Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye. All right, we will then go to the Finance Committee. Councilor Royo.
Thank you, Council President. We have one item on our agenda this evening, resolution number thirty-seven, authorizing the donation of 339 through 341 Beaver Street to Saka Development. And I don't see Director Campbell here, but I'm not sure.
That's gonna be me.
Oh, Mayor Sarachi.
Thank you, Councilor Royo. I, um, we'll just provide a brief background. We had reported some of this to council, I believe, at the end of 2023. If you recall, this particular parcel located on Beaver Street has had a long history, beginning with Lancaster Equity and the Community Action Partnership. It was then transferred to Rackle, and we were moving forward with park planning that was contemplated when it was owned by the, previously by Lancaster Equity. Before that, it had been contemplated to be a community garden. By the end of 2023, you may recall, we had run into some significant roadblocks related to the development of this parcel for a park. One was that we could not secure an exit onto Queen Street because of the property ownership along Queen Street, so it was one way in and one way out of the park. We were attempting to address some of the safety concerns through some subdivision, and we had two adjacent property owners that were interested in that subdivision, but then one withdrew. And then subsequently, the cost ballooned, and so the cost per square footage went pretty high. So originally, we estimated $250,000, and cost estimates were running more towards $600,000. So for all of these reasons, the city opted to hit pause on developing this into a park and began to contemplate some other opportunities to align with the priorities of the city, primarily related to housing, which brings us to today. The property in April 2023 was transitioned back to the city from Rackle. This was a decision that was made in, as I mentioned, in April at a redevelopment authority meeting. That brought it back to us and then is now coming to you. And this is a resolution that would transition the ownership of this property to Saka for the development of affordable housing. As indicated in the resolution, there are deed restrictions that provide affordability criteria and terms related to that affordability criteria, which are consistent with other affordable housing investments that the city has made. Saka believes that they can develop this property into potentially five units. They are doing a lot of work on Beaver Street already and historically. They are currently constructing a new unit at the corner of Beaver, and I believe it's Andrews Street, and they are renovating another property that was damaged by fire in the next, I think it's the 400 block or 500 block, 500 block. And then they had also done some renovation of other properties on the 300 block. So they have a history of working in the neighborhood. Again, this is a donation of property to Saka for the express purpose of affordable housing.
Thank you, Mayor Sarachi. Just one question, would you be able to elaborate a little bit more on the income criteria that will be listed in the deed restriction?
Yes, it's in the resolution, so give me a moment to pull that up.
Oh, my apologies if that was listed there.
Councilor Royo, I do have it in front of me.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Sorry, it's in, under section one. It's to be, um, an occupier whose annual family income is at or below eighty percent of the Lancaster County area median income at the time of sale or rented to a tenant whose annual family income is at or below sixty percent of the Lancaster County area median income, and that restriction's in place for fifteen years.
Thank you, Council President. Any questions or comments from the Finance Committee? Full council? Councilor Baker? Council President Baker?
Councilor Royo, thank you. To be clear, when looking at this parcel, there is, this is an empty lot and maybe some garages, is that correct, Mayor Sarachi?
Only the empty lot, the garages are not owned, they're privately owned.
Got it, so this is an empty lot that has nothing on it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Councilor Madden?
Thank you, Councilor Royo. My question goes towards some of the deed restrictions. And just to be clear, this is in perpetuity forever, and there is, along with the land, is the agreement that it's gonna stay in this use, is just my question.
The affordability restriction is in full force and effect for a period of fifteen years from the date of the conveyance of this property to Saka, the restriction period. And that Saka, by accepting delivery of the deed covenants on behalf of Saka, its successors and assigns to perform and abide by said terms, conditions, and provisions. So it is a fifteen-year restriction. These are the same restrictions that are used through the redevelopment authority and I believe other affordable housing projects, and I'm looking to the housing team here who are shaking their heads yes.
Thank you, and then also just my final question. Given that this is on a residential block, will Saka also commit to making sure that the roads are the way that they were found when the development is done, and what will the impact of the development have on the neighbors on the block?
So with any construction, there are definitely impacts to the surrounding residents, and Saka has, as I mentioned, been doing projects on these few blocks, 3, 4, and 500 of Beaver Street. I'm not anticipating that there is going to be need for a lot of work in the streets. There may be sidewalk-related work that needs to get done, but that would, all of this has to go through our, you know, our building codes. All of that process has to happen, and so this is just the conveyance of the property to Saka at this point.
Thank you, and the only reason I mention that is because it's kind of a skinny street on that block.
It is a skinny street.
So, but that, unless Director Delft. And that concludes my questions, Council Royo, thank you.
Thank you, Council Madden.
Very briefly, Council Ahmed, thank you, it's a good question. I just wanted to note as part of any land development project, that is part of the consideration. What typically happens is the city will take an amount of money in escrow to protect any of the public assets. So if a sidewalk is torn up, if a street is removed, if there's a utility line that needs to be put in, that's required to be repaired by the developer.
Thank you, and one last question, I guess, is regarding the fifteen-year restrictions. When year sixteen comes, does that mean that, I mean, I know that Saka most likely wouldn't sell it to like the highest bidder, but what happens to the land agreement at year sixteen?
Yeah, typically in these cases, and Saka's used this model in some of their other homes, the idea is that that restriction is in place for fifteen years. They have primarily specialized in owner-occupied units, and the idea is that the owner of that home is able to build wealth and equity in that home and then hopefully keep it in the family if they so wish, or if they are to resell it, then to capitalize on that equity. So at that time, they would be able to sell it to any other buyer. The restriction does cease after that fifteen-year period.
But in this case, you're talking about rental units?
I think this is contemplated as possibly owner-occupied or rental units, if I read the resolution correctly. In the case of the rental unit, that would, again, remain in place for the fifteen years. I will say, with most nonprofit partners that we have like Saka, who are focused on affordable housing, there is an opportunity to essentially re-up and then dedicate that unit again for affordable housing, for another fifteen-year period, for example. That would require possibly other subsidy or refinancing at that point.
But that would be the decision of Saka in this case, or would it be the city's decision to re-up the fifteen years?
That's correct, it would be Saka's choice at that point.
Thank you, and that concludes my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Delft. Any additional questions or comments from council? From the public? Well, with that, I'll motion to move resolution number... Do you have a comment, Ms. Gomez?
Yes, I have a comment. In regards to, excuse me. Susie Gomez, 115 North Reservoir. Okay, so I just had a comment. I firmly believe that if the city is considering transferring two properties to Saka, an organization that sells homes at market price for profit, we should instead prioritize preparation for the Polite and Dixon families. Mayor stated that the city can simply give away the Fire Station Six property, which raises questions about fairness and community benefit. Rather than allowing a profit-driven transaction, we should honor the legacy of Nelson Polite Senior, a reverend leader of the civil rights movement after whom the city hall is named, and his father, Abraham Polite, whose parents were enslaved in Brideland, South Carolina. This deep historical connection underscores the need of restorative justice. Additionally, we should support Reverend Kevin Polite's vision for community upliftment, as he emphasized last Tuesday, focusing on providing resources for our community's children and supporting the less fortunate by redirecting these properties to initiatives led by the Polite family. We can invest in Zoe Future, fostering equity and opportunity while paying tribute to their enduring contribution to our city's history and values. And I do know that Saka is receiving this as a grant, so I'm not saying it's for profit. I'm just speculating that there are other things that we could also implement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Any additional questions from the public? With that, I will motion to move resolution number thirty-seven to the next full council meeting. Just need a second.
Need a second? Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Council President, that concludes the Finance Committee.
Thank you very much, Council Royo. We'll now move to our Public Works Committee. Councilor Hirsch.
Thank you, Council President. We have one item on our agenda tonight, a resolution recognizing National Public Works Week, which is coming up from May 18th to May 24th. I'd like to invite Director Campbell up to say a few more words about this resolution.
Thank you all. We're very proud of being able to celebrate or nominate the celebration of National Public Works Week. This year, the National Public Works Week's motto is "People, Purpose, and Presence." We believe that what we are trying to do and continue to do is be as present as possible where we can in the public right-of-way, during Vision Zero, in the water and wastewater realm, as well as the stormwater realm, capital construction and operations, and sustainability in the environment. Last year, the National Public Works motto was dedicated to public property, dedicated to the quality of life, which is exactly what our motto was as adopted in 2020. We're very, very proud of that. If you wish, and I did not have the foresight to put it up to have it launched for today, but if you go to the website, the City of Lancaster website, the DPW website, there is at least one, and I believe up to five, public service announcements, videos that talk a little bit more about what we do, how we do it, where we're interviewing people, staff in the public right-of-way and in Public Works, and they speak to what they do and why they're proud of the work that they do. We're very much in favor of this resolution, and we're hoping that not only is it recognized, as you see all of our people in our bright yellow vests throughout the month of May, throughout Mayor's Neighborhood Month, but also there's going to be a, did you mention the baseball game?
I did not. It's going to.
We have arranged for the staff of DPW for a baseball game at Clipper Stadium on Sunday, the 18th. That benefits the staff of DPW, and we're very much looking forward to other opportunities for our staff to be recognized.
Thank you very much, Director Campbell. Yeah, that's a really nice gesture to the Public Works employees and their families. Yeah, that's a really nice gesture to, to the Public Works employees and their families. All I'll add is that, you know, Public Works are, are things that I think a lot of us take for granted. You know, we take for granted that when we turn the water on, the water comes out of the tap, and that we flush our toilet, it goes somewhere, and that, you know, our trash goes somewhere, that stormwater is managed. All these things that, we only tend to notice them when it's not working, but we don't necessarily appreciate the, most of the time when it is working, and all of the, all of the hard work that goes into the behind-the-scenes of that, and that's the hundreds of Public Works employees that work every day to make that happen. So I'm really glad that we are doing this resolution, and we'll have more to say on the 13th. With that, I will make a motion to move this to our full meeting of council on Tuesday, May 13th.
Say again?
All those in favor? Aye. I'm sorry, I just realized, I did not ask for comment from council or committee. Any comment?
I'll just echo your thanks to the Department of Public Works and to Director Campbell for his leadership in that department. I may have more to say on the 13th, but we're excited to honor your staff again this year. Thank you.
And with that, that will conclude the Public Works Committee.
Thank you very much. Our next committee, Community Planning, Councilor Craig.
Thank you, Council President. We have two items on the agenda this evening. Is that, is it not on? Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. We have two items on the agenda this evening, first being resolution number 36, 2025, amending the official sewers facility plan to include AM Global Holdings, Holdings Project at 617 Fremont Street.
Bring that down real close to your, yeah. Is it on or off?
Is it turned on?
Okay, better?
Green light, perfect.
Lauren Finn, Senior Planner. This is a pretty simple sewer planning module. It actually went through you all and was approved already, but I jumped the gun, and so when they got it up at the state level, we had approved it before the county, so it's just coming back at you now that the county has approved it. So the plan looks good, and just a step in the process.
Thank you so much. Yeah, yes, we've done these several times, times before, and I understand that it's a new land development that meets all the criteria to move forward.
Yep.
So with that, I would ask, are there any questions from the committee? Any questions from the public?
Jose Rivera, 100th Block of Coral. My question is, are we getting a new water station? You know, because that whole thing is like from the 1800s.
For the, for that particulars?
Well, yes, all the tainted water and everything.
What they'll do is they'll expand the capacity for, for that development specifically.
But you're not fixing the main project, the whole main.
No.
And that's the problem.
Thank you. With that, I will make a motion to move this to full council on, I think we want to do, I need to see, is it the 27th? Yes.
Would it, would it be amenable to move this to the 27th or the 13th?
It doesn't really make a difference.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to move this to full council on the 27th.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second item on the agenda this evening is Administration Bill Number 4, amending the Historic District Ordinance. And I see Mr. Delft making his way to the podium.
Good evening again. Yes, thank you. Just wanted to give you a little more context about the proposed minor amendments to Chapter 155 of the City Code. This relates to the historic districts ordinance. Essentially, the administration has proposed an update to the definition of building official within the historic districts ordinance. One of the things that we're trying to create here is more flexibility for appointments to the Historic Architectural Review Board and to the Historical Commission. If you look at the code within Chapter 155, it refers to the building official, meaning one. I presume that that dates back to when the city only had one building official. At this time, now we have a set of professional staff within the Building Codes Bureau that is responsible for these duties. Mr. John LaFevere has been serving on the board, both Harb and Historical Commission for some time. We would like to create more flexibility in the definition to allow other certified staff within the Bureau to, to serve on those boards. It also gave us an opportunity to update that definition so that it was in line with the Department of Labor standards for building code certifications. So if, if we look at the, bear with me for a sec, a moment here. I've gotten my papers out of order. As you'll see in the new definition, it states a building official is a building inspector certified as such by the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry, who is either an employee of the city, an independent contractor of the city, or otherwise retained by the city, and who their certification by the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry and with authorization from the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development is authorized to issue permits for construction, alteration, repair, or demolition, et cetera, and it goes on from there. One other element to this change in the code is it, well, I should back up and say, since, since the beginning of this ordinance, it was always contemplated that a building official served on Harb or the Historical Commission, that we want that professional designation to remain. The only difference is we've also proposed in this ordinance that City Council is delegating that designation of the building code official to the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development. So essentially, that would give a person in my role the power to select one of our staff members to serve on Harb or the Historical Commission. So it does, saves a bureaucratic step for City Council. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great, I have none at the moment. Are there questions from the committee? Council, questions from council?
If I may, Councilor Craig. In regards to a candidate, do you have somebody already in mind?
In, in addition to Mr. LaFevere, we actually have a few other of our staff members who have the proper certifications to serve on Harb and the Historical Commission. So that would be, at this time, Mr. Dave Hamrick is another person who has the appropriate certifications. There are a couple others as well. He's sort of the next in line in terms of seniority, but we'll have to make a determination based on workload and that type of thing.
Thank you. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Craig. Director Delft, just to put a, kind of a fine point on this.
Yes.
I think for me, the most important part of these definition changes is that it doesn't change the qualifications for this person, it changes the number of people that we can select, that you can appoint to serve those roles. Is that correct? Am I characterizing that correctly?
That is correct, and, and actually it clarifies the certifications that are required as well, which was not included in the old definition.
So the definition right now doesn't have as many qualifications actually listed and defined as the new definition would.
That, that is correct, and we also discovered that there was an opportunity to make sure that it was in line with the State Act governing historic districts as well.
And this makes no changes to the folks that we would appoint as members of the public to these boards, commissions, or authorities.
It does not.
Thank you.
So Director Delft, what are the qualifications?
So if you look at the Department of Labor website, there's a whole set of different types of certifications for a building code official. Certification number 15 refers to a commercial code inspector level, and that's essentially the standard that we would be upholding. There are other certifications related to plumbing, electrical, there's over, I think there's somewhere in the range of a dozen to 20 certifications that a building code inspector can earn, and I think I may have shared this with you last year during the budget presentation. We have a few master code professionals in our, in our department, and there's only a small number in, in the whole country, so we really have a well, well-regarded and well-certified staff.
Excellent. Are there any further questions from council as a whole? Are there any questions from the public?
I just have a question. The Historic Society is, are you a member of the Historic Society or the Historic Committee?
No, I'm not, and there are specific eligibility criteria for serving on the Historical Commission and the Harb, and I can, I cannot serve on either one of those.
Okay, and you're asking for a building inspector position that will be a part of another debt on top of taxpayer dollar? So my question is, the president of the Historic Society or the current building inspector, are you saying that he's incapable of performing these duties or meeting these expectations, and that's why you're opening up another area to oversee his current work? Is that what you're implying?
Ms. Gomez, can I, may I endeavor to answer that question? So this bill does not create any new positions in the City of Lancaster, it does not create any additional employees, it does not create any additional employees that work on boards, commissions, authorities. It simply means that the, the professionals that we already have working within our building codes departments can serve on boards, commissions, and authorities, expanding the definition to include more than just one person, because we already employ more than one qualified person.
But is there currently more than one building inspector?
Yes.
And he is given full authority to meet these criterias? He's asking for permission to make these decisions?
He's, this bill is changing the definition and allowing for the appointment directly by the Director of Community Planning to the boards, commissions, authorities, not to make anyone else a building inspector.
I'm not saying that it's not to make anyone else, it's giving him the authority to do somebody else's job.
No, that's not correct.
So he's changing the definition so that he can have an open...
He's not ma, this does not allow anybody else to do anybody else's job.
Okay, so when he mentioned a Director of Building Inspector, Director of Community Planning, to delegate that, can you elaborate that?
To delegate the appointment to boards, commissions, and authorities? So there's not just one city employee, city representative, who can serve on all of them, but multiple of those employees can serve?
That's my point. Which will burden the task.
There's, Director Delft, do the city employees who are already employed and paid by the City of Lancaster receive any additional compensation for serving on boards, commissions, or authorities?
They do not.
Thank you.
And, and just to be clear too, the law already requires that a building inspector sit on the Harb and on the Historical Commission.
Thank you, and is doing so currently?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Okay, come on.
Jose Rivera, 100th Block of Coral. Now, will you have decisions in making, what, if these historical buildings stay up or they come down?
This is just...
Just, just for instance, I mean, I got what, three minutes? Just like they're doing on, what's that up here? Prince Street or Prince Street where they knocked the whole building out and they just kept the face of it? That's what you want to do?
Mr. Rivera, this bill...
Because that was, that was a historical building, so they knocked the whole building out and just left the front of it. That's historical, but the rest of the building is gone. That's what I'm asking.
So this bill has nothing to do with specific or general decisions?
You guys have been destroying the history of this city for the longest. We have a historical committee and it's mindless, because you guys still go and take down historical buildings, so stop it. Just like the one I'm talking about. You kept just the face of it, but and then you destroyed the whole entire back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, I'll make a motion to move this to full council on the 13th.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That completes Community Planning, Council President.
Thank you, Councilor Craig. We'll now move to Committee of the Whole, we have a few items under that. The first one is Council Resolution Number 33. This is recognizing National Bike Month and being introduced by Councilor Hirsch.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, Bike Month, May is Bike Month nationally, and the city has a lot of really exciting events going on. I think every time I talk about Bike Month up here, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention If you go there, you'll see all of the events that are coming up. I'll have more to say at the 13th, well, at the, you know, assuming this moves forward at the next meeting. But yeah, I think it's really important that we've continued to recognize what Lancaster City could be as far as a safe environment for people to bike throughout, so that's all I have to say. Are there, well, thank you, I'm going to return it to you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Hirsch. Any additional council comments on Resolution 33 at this time? All right, from the public?
Jose Rivera, 100th Block of Coral Street, me and you are compulsive bike riders, ain't we? And the bike lanes are perfect, I love them, but there's one problem. We got company trucks parking on our designated bike lane, especially, I have pictures, I have to develop them, so you guys could see UGI, PP, and now, I didn't see water and sewage, I seen City Hall's truck on it blocking our road. Now the problem here is, if they blocking the bike lane on the other, on the outside of, of the street where the passenger gets out, if they blocking that lane, you have to go around it, and right now you're jumping into traffic. Very dangerous. I already got pushed off the road four times. I see multiple people get hurt because the drivers do not pay attention, or they really don't care. Plain and simple, and, and we all take, well, the adults, we all take those bike lanes. They're very good, they're quick, but we need a parking authority to start giving tickets if they're gonna park on that. If they want to make more money, give them parking tickets for being on the bike lane.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I do want to respond to that because all I will say is, I, I see it too, I, I hear you. I see, you know, obstructions in bike lanes. You can call the police, not emergency line, and they will ticket those vehicles. I've, I've witnessed it myself. So I just want to remind you that that is an option, you can call the, not emergency line. And the only other thing I'll say is like, you know, I hope that some of these bike lanes, you know, they've been put in in the last five, five-ish years. You know, I think about what will the culture around them be like ten, twenty, fifty years from now, and I do hope that to some extent, like people, I guess, adapt to them being there, I guess, like I think some of it is just the newness of them to some extent too. Yeah, that's what I would say about that.
Thank you very much, Council Hirsch. All right, I will make a motion to move Resolution Number Thirty-three to our next meeting on May thirteenth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next item on the Committee of the Whole is Resolution Number Thirty-four, 2025. This is recognizing Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. I'm proud again to introduce this resolution this year, recognizing our Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Lancaster and the contributions great and small, seen and unseen of the AAPI community. I'd like to thank Lancaster AAPI for their efforts and support and uplift the Lancaster AAPI community during this month and all throughout the year, and events like Lunar New Year Celebration at Yule Plaza, which is a personal favorite of mine. They're also helping to make some updates to this resolution that council will receive soon, and I have invited them to attend our next meeting on May thirteenth, and there will be some speakers here at that date. Any additional council comments on the resolution? From the public? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to move Resolution Thirty-four forward to our meeting on May thirteenth.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The last item on the Committee of the Whole agenda was to be Ethics Commission applicant interviews, and I just have a brief update on those. As you can imagine, having folks in for interviews and getting them scheduled can be a little challenging, so we are going to be pushing them forward to the June second committee meeting and potentially the May twenty-seventh meeting of council, depending on who is available on what date. So there will be more information on that moving forward, and I appreciate council's patience as we organize those things, and appreciate your understanding that these, these things can be a little complicated and tricky, so we won't be taking them up this evening. All right. Having reached the end of our committee, our committee agenda, I'll just verify, Mr. Harris, the clerk's report you have sent in writing to all members of council, is that right?
Yes, I have.
Thank you very much. Then having reached the end of our agenda, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.